Rockdale County Board of Education Public Hearing to Order. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second, Justin.
It has been... A motion to approve the agenda has been presented, made by Heather Duncan and seconded by Mr. Justin Kenny. Is that in discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is six zero. This is the final of three required public hearings, providing stakeholders the opportunity to share their opinions on whether to opt out of House Bill 581. Although the official public notice of the hearing indicates an intent to opt out, it is important to note that the final decision will be made by the collective action of the Rockdale County Board of Education. A majority vote for the resolution to opt out will result in board opting out, but a majority vote against it will result in the board remaining in HB 581. The next item on the agenda is Superintendent Cabinet Overview of 581. Ms. Chesser, please introduce your cabinet, provide your overview.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to our Vice Chair, Ms. Janie Jones, and to our board members and to our public that is in attendance today. At this time, I'd like to call up our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Joyce Lynn Smith, to provide our overview of House Bill 581.
There we go. Good evening, Madam Chair, Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, Board Members, Superintendent Chesser, and Community Acting Superintendent, excuse me. I'll be discussing House Bill 581. Excuse me. House Bill 581 aims to cap the amount of increase on assessed value of homestead-exempted properties to the rate of inflation. Local governments have until March 1st, 2025, to opt out. Actually tomorrow, because March 1st is on Saturday, should they choose to do so. House Bill 581 promises tax relief to the taxpayer. For example, a homeowner with a home with a 2024 fair market value of $150,000 will see a $6,000 tax exemption and save $120 annually. Under 581 with these parameters, excuse me. Likewise, a $420,000 house would see an exemption of $16,800 and would have a savings of $336. Keep in mind that this does not replace existing exemptions. It is on the top of the current $15,000 homestead exemption, which would increase the savings for both homes by $300 in this example. Additionally, the $50,000 senior tax exemption for those 65 and older would remain in place, and that would be an additional $1,000 savings. Our Tax Commissioner provided this chart that shows an inflationary increase between 2.2 to 2.5 on the homesteaded properties through 2029. It also shows a 10% increase on all the taxable, other taxable properties. This chart estimates the impact to the district's revenues over the next five years as $61.7 million, a loss of $61.7 million. This loss would have negative impact on the financial stability of the district. In 2024, there were a total of 36,504 parcels, of which 19,107 were homestead-exempted properties. The total revenue for 2024 was $99.3 million, and based on these projections, would increase to $105.3 for the next year. The district's budget has increased year over year as we've seen a huge increase in our employer costs. Due to this and mandated salary increases, the cost of a starting teacher has risen from $63,000 to $85,000, an increase of almost $22,000 in the four short years. Notice the example of the parapros that's under that. We pay more than... More benefit costs, more in benefit course for a starting pair than we do their actual salary. And in 2026, benefit costs will rise again. State and local revenue funds are our major revenue sources, and is how we support our day-to-day operations. State funds have supported a smaller percentage each year. Local tax dollars are having to fund a greater portion of our budget. It's gone from 34.3% in 2019 to 48% in 2025. Our local fair share, the amount the state deducts from our QBE formula earnings, has increased significantly from $11 million to $22 million. And equalization, what they add to the formula to reduce the financial disparities between districts, has seen significant decreases from $12 million to $3 million. Our state revenues are what they are. They apply the same formula to the entire state to calculate our earnings. House Bill 581 was enacted because of hyperinflated home values, but during the Great Depression, excuse me, recession, we saw negative inflation. The district saw a total of 41.6% decrease in net tax digest. It was not until 2020 when the tax revenue rebounded to the 2008 values. During the recession, the district also saw austerity cuts from the state revenue, leading to staffing cuts, no salary increases, larger class sizes, furloughs, and the removal of the 4% alternative retirement that the district offers its to its staff. Unlike many metro schools, our Rockdale County Public Schools is nearly 70% residential. This makes us even more reliant on these tax dollars. Opting in locks us into a decision with too many unknowns. How will local vouchers, bills, and impact us? Will local legislation, considering reducing the millage rate with local legislation, considering reducing the millage rate up to 20, how could we generate additional revenue from taxes needed to cover increasing costs? How will possible cuts or closures at the U.S. Department of Education impact this decision? And how will we respond to the next recession? That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We would now recognize visitor who would like to address the board, and we do have visitor here to address the board. Please, listener, there has been changes. This is the time when we allow citizen three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. Registered speakers may not assign a year their speaking time to other speakers. We do not normally address your concerns today, but we may ask administration to address your concerns and provide you with an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter, or if you contend that your legal rights has been violated, we have specific grievous procedures for these matters. Speakers should be professional, and we respectfully ask that you refrain from using profane and vulgar language, and you should not make threats, slanderous remarks, or engage in behavior that disrupts the decorum of this meeting. By submitting a request to comment card, you acknowledge and agree that you understand and will follow the guidelines for meeting decorum and public participation, which was listed on the comment card you completed. I would like to call Mr. George Kellacheck. And before Mr. Kellacheck start, we have a board policy that states that you cannot have signs in the room, so you have to put your signs away, please. And just a reminder, if we run out of time during this hearing before everyone presents, wishing to address the board has an opportunity to do so, we will continue public comments during the regular session.
Good evening, George Kellacheck, Rockdale County Citizen. Like to appreciate everybody coming out today, Acting Superintendent, Board Members, citizens, taxpayers. Your number one chart here showing from the Tax Commissioner. If you would go in depth, like the Eye of the Taxpayer Association members do, over the next six years, Rockdale County citizens and Rockdale County school system taxpayers will realize 112,000... Excuse me, 112 million, $155,971 in relief, or approximately $6,000 per family over that lifetime. Let's talk about cost savings, let's talk about budget. The colored pictures that you have in front of you, we went and did investigative information throughout the school system. We have found out that $3.3 million in curriculum was ordered between 2022 and 2023 by the Rockdale County School System for 11 elementary schools. This curriculum is no longer being utilized by any EIP teacher in the system. A total waste of $3.3 million of taxpayer money. You got a lot of work to do. Thank you very much. If you need me, I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Kellacheck. Now we start calling Mr. Garrett Parker.
Hi, Garrett Parker. Thanks for letting me speak today. I'm here to ask you to opt in to HB 581, the Save the Homes Act, and I think it's the right move for Rockdale. First off, our citizens already said yes to this. Back in November, Rockdale citizens voted for the Georgia Constitutional Amendment 1, 58 to 42, for just this county. That's a solid majority telling us they want tax relief, capping property value increases at inflation, and that'll keep things predictable for homeowners. Opting out would go against what most people in Rockdale chose. In today's world, sticking with what the voters want feels like the smart play. Next, things are shifting with the enrollments. The Georgia Promise Scholarship is coming soon with vouchers for kids in struggling schools to find other options. A lot of parents, me included, are looking at that. So when students leave, some of these schools enrollment will drop, and there'll be, you know, less need for teachers, less strain on facilities, and lower costs overall. HB 581 fits right into that. It keeps revenue growth in check, which matches up with a smaller school system instead of betting on bigger budgets every year. Pining our finances to the ever-increasing property taxes, it just doesn't seem like the right way to go, to me. Most counties around us are leaning towards opting in, staying with the state's plan and the voters' decisions. If we opt out, Rockdale's the odd one out. Homeowners here pay more while others get a break. If we end up needing extra funds, the Board of Commissioners can figure that out. Sales tax, state grants, other avenues, without turning our backs on what the majority of Rockdale voted for. Opting in respects that vote, lines up with where our schools are heading, and keeps us in step with everyone else. It's about giving families some breathing room and making sure Rockdale thrives financially, educationally, all of it. So I'm asking you, let's stay opted in. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. We will now have Mr. Bob Nessbit.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Members of the Staff and Community. I'm here on behalf of the Rockdale Democratic Committee and the 100 black men of Newton and Rockdale. They have all voted unanimously to opt out. We're asking you to opt out. And the first and most important thing that's imperative is that this board tell the people the truth. That's the common line that we need to talk about here today, to tell the truth. But before we get to the truth, the first thing is, what is the human cost associated with opting out? When you cut $61 million, how is it going to affect the people that work for the school board? The students that are educated in the school system? We're talking about tax relief, but we're not talking about how it affects people, human cost. What are the unintended consequences? When you think something through, a wise businessman not only looks at what's happening short-term, but you look at long-term. What are all of the consequences? What is the impact of what is happening? If you don't know the impact, you can't make an informed and intelligent decision. This is the key. Informed and intelligent decision-making is why we put you on the board. What are you going to accomplish through HB 581? What's the purpose of it? Is it really to lower taxes? Because if that's the purpose, I hear everybody coming up, we need tax relief. All you have to do is lower the millage rate. The millage rate is at 20. If you have a $300,000 home, every one point that you reduce the millage rate will decrease taxes by $300. Has nothing to do with 581. If you opt out, all you have to do right now is reduce the millage rate, and everybody's taxes will be decreased. If you stay in, then you are locked in and you guaranteed a tax increase. Why do I say that? If you keep the millage rate at 20, and now every year, the assessed values will go up by inflation, automatically, the taxes, the property taxes will go up as well. Tell them the truth. Tell them about that. See, what you want to say is, oh, we're giving you tax relief. 581 doesn't. You know what it does? It defunds public education. That's the purpose of 581. Why do I say that? It takes $61 million out of the budget over five years. That is defunding. When you get those vouchers, and each student that comes out, there's $6,500 more that comes out of the budget for every student that takes those vouchers. How is that going to affect the system? How is that educating our kids? When you on the board, I came here and saw every one of you take an oath. You put your hand on the Bible before God and man.
Sir, thank you for your time. Not... Sir, thank you, sir.
Next, we have Mr. Tommy... Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nessbit. We next have Mr. Tommy Ploner. Next, we have Mr. Michael Joyce.
Good evening, Board. I'm here to urge you to vote no to opting out of 581. We need 581. I'm a 10-year resident of the county and a retired teacher with 20 years' service in this community and beyond, two-time Teacher of the Year. So like most, if not all, of the attendees here tonight, the overall well-being of our students remains paramount, and that has not diminished even though our own children are long grown into adulthood. I want to be very clear. I do understand the role of property taxes in funding the school system and the necessity from time to time for reasonable, and I stress the word reasonable, tax increases in this endeavor. But I do not understand, and what I cannot support, is what amounts to a license to continue to increase our school taxes at levels that we, the property owners in this community, have no control over. That is why I urge you to vote no to opting out of 581. We need 581. Tonight, you're going to hear arguments on both sides. Many of them will sound convincing. Some from sincere residents that I respect, many of them, or some of them I know personally. You will hear things like, you've sworn an oath to do your best for the students, not the seniors. I want to say two things. It's both and. We cannot just be concerned about the needs of the students at the exclusion of the parents. Secondly, if the Board of Commissioners and the city agrees with the constituents, agrees with what we voted for, you should do the same. So I strongly urge you to vote no to opting out of 581. We need 581. You may hear arguments like, if we restrict funding for school, critical programs will be lost, and we will not be able to attract the staffing that we need. I want to say three things, if I have time. The facts tell a different story. We are graduating students that are subpar when we look at the results. Secondly, if we continue to put a disproportionate burden on the taxpayer, the results will be catastrophic. Vote to keep 581. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Eva Joyce, are you going to come speak? No. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Teresa Boyd.
Good evening. Every kid can be somebody if they have someone to show them the way, a village. The teachers, the school staff, the school board, the community. During the Super Bowl 59, a commercial played, "I Am Somebody." It's a poem written by Reverend Jesse Jackson, emphasizing the significance and individuality of every person. I took this poem and switched it up a little. I am somebody. I am somebody. I stand in front of my students every day, not just to teach, but to inspire. Not just to instruct, but to uplift. I speak the spark in their... I see the spark in their lives, the hunger to learn, the dreams waiting to take flight. But dreams cannot grow in barren soil. Education is not just a job, it is a calling. God placed me here for a reason. To be a light, to guide, to pour into young minds. I have stayed late. I have given more than I had. I have fought for my students when no one else would because I know that every child who walk through my doors is somebody. They are future doctors, engineers, artists, mathematicians, and leaders. But without the resources to nurture them, without the support to guide them, without the very programs that make their dreams possible, what are we telling them? That their potential has limits? That their future is negotiable? That we do not build but by tearing down? We do not move forward by going back? We do not silence voices that need to be heard? I am a teacher. I am a mentor. I am a believer in what is possible. All my students, our students, are possible. They are somebody. God has a plan for them. Rockdale County, stand with us. Protect our students. Protect their future. Please opt out of House Bill 581. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. We'll now have Mr. Magic Boyd.
Good evening, Board Members, educators, and members of the Rockdale community. My name is Magic Boyd, and I'm a student at Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology. I stand before you as proof of what happens when a school system invests in its students. But tonight, I'm afraid. Not for myself, but for the students who will come after me. The students whose futures are being debated in this very room. I want you all to do something. Extend your hand and keep it open. This open hand represents what happens when we opt out of House Bill 581, when we fund education, protect our schools, and invest in programs that allow students like me to succeed. Now, close your hand. That closed hand, that's what happens if we opt in. Opportunities vanish, programs disappear, safety is compromised, doors shut in the face of students who only want a chance. I've heard the argument that opting in will lower taxes. But let's be honest, this is a short-term fix. The government will find another way to collect that money, and when they do, we'll still be paying, except this time, we'll be paying with the futures of our students. I know how much things cost. I work at a grocery store. I see the price changes every day. Eggs aren't the same as they used to be. Groceries are expensive. Families are struggling. But education is not where we should be making the cuts. This week alone, we had multiple school shooting threats. One at Heritage High School from a social media post, and another from a student on an RCA bus threatening to kill everyone in the school. This is real. And House Bill 581 threatens the funding that keeps us safe. If we opt in, what happens when we can no longer afford campus police? Are we willing to gamble with student lives? It's not just safety at risk. Heritage students have the option to attend class online via Microsoft Teams or complete their work asynchronously through Canvas. These programs funded by resources House Bill 581 would cut are vital. And when it comes to... Oh, Rockdale Magnet is a STEM school. Cutting STEM programs removes the foundation of what makes our school what it is. And when it comes to leadership, Dr. Oats was a leader. He empowered us. He fought for us. He supported us. He was never on the news for any crime. He led with integrity, vision, and true commitment to students. That is leadership. So I ask you again to keep your hands open, opt out of House Bill 581. Because we are not just numbers in a spreadsheet. We are not just budget lines. We are the future of Rockdale County, and we need you to fight for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Now we'll have Mrs. C. Abraham. We will have Ms. Jayla Brown.
Good evening. My name is Jayla Brown, and I am a proud student at Heritage High School and Rockdale Career Academy. I'm enrolled in healthcare, graphic design, and fashion design pathways. I am honored to serve as a HOSA Executive Assistant and a Student Athletic Aid and a member of the Varsity Girls Track Team. These are just a few organizations I am a part of as a Rockdale County student. I stand before you today because you are voting on HB 581, and I trust you are already familiar with what it means. But before we move forward, I want to address something important. I heard comments suggesting that students like me should come to these meetings because we might not fully understand the issues. To me, that felt like the message telling me I shouldn't care enough to learn about what's happening in my own education. But that's not the truth. We as students are here because we care. We care deeply about our education, and we have the right to speak about it. I take my role as a student seriously. I've educated myself, and I encourage my peers to do the same because we are the ones who will be directly affected by the decisions you make. When I disagree, when I see something that could hurt us, I will stand up. I'm here today after a long day of track practice, after school club meetings because I'm passionate about the future of our education and opportunities we need to succeed. HB 581 threatens the academic support we rely on, the resources we need to learn, and the teachers who have made a difference in our lives. I am speaking for myself and the countless students who aren't here today but who feel the weight of these decisions. We are the future of Rockdale County, and we are invested in it. That's why I urge you to vote to opt out of HB 581. Don't let our dreams be cut short. Don't take away the programs and activities that inspires us, that push us to be better. I know none of you want to see cuts that hurt students, but opting in to HB 581 could lead to those very cuts, cuts that it costs to us. Cuts that it costs to us, the teachers who've shaped us, and the opportunities we worked so hard to achieve. Please do not let this happen. Vote to protect us. We deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jayla Brown. Do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting? A second?
Second, Justin.
A motion to conclude the meeting has been made by Justin, Janie Jones, and second by Mr. Justin Kenny. Any discussion? All in favor? The meeting is concluded at seven o'clock with a seven-zero vote. Good evening. It is now seven o'clock. I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education regular session into order. As a friendly reminder, attendees should not yell, point of order, or other comments from the audience because this disrupts the decorum of the meeting. If you cannot hear speakers, please feel free to move to the front row or raise your hand to get my attention, and I'll remind the speaker to speak in their microphone. Please help me welcome Ms. Stacy Clark, Assistant Principal Salem High School, and Scholar Amari Guthrie as they deliver our inspiration message.
Good evening. Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, Superintendent Chesser, Board members and Cabinet members and guests. My name is Stacy Clark. I am the Assistant Principal at Salem High School, home of the Seminoles. I am, it is my pleasure to welcome Ms. Amari Guthridge, who will be delivering our inspiration for tonight. Amari is a distinguished senior at Salem High School. So please join me in welcoming Amari Guthridge to the podium.
Here on this path called life we tread. Each step a journey, the unknown ahead. Beneath the canopy of the blue sky, we journey on, you and I. From the stars to the vibrant rainbows, life unfolds in a symphony that constantly grows. With every step, a story unravels along each road. With every stride, crossroads unfold for the young and old. Forking into dreams and nightmares, fulfillment and disappointment. And like a theater where acts and roles may sway, we dance to the twists and turns of each passing day. Through valleys deep and mountains high, through the sun and the stormy sky, we sail towards a horizon filled with life's tide. Sometimes adrift on a path of joy, and other times restraint. From the silence of solitude to the crowds' embrace, life's rhythm echoes in every heart space. So cherish each moment, both quiet and loud. Through every storm, stand firm and proud. For as time marches on in its endless arts, life's meaning is written in the depth of the heart. Thank you.
Mr. Guthrie? Mr. Guthrie, can you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to republic for which it stands, one nation and one God, undivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented? A motion to approve the agenda has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Ms. Janie Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion is approved, seven-zero. We do have visitor, and we will continue where we left off. But let me first read the script. This is the time when we allow citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. Registered speakers may not assign a year their speaking time to other speakers. We do not normally address your concerns today, but we may ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you with appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter, or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for this matter. Speakers should be professional. And we respectfully ask that you refrain from using profane or vulgar language. And you should not make threats, slanderous remarks, or engage in behavior that disrupted the decorum of this meeting. By submitting a request to comment card, you acknowledge and agree that you understand and will follow the guidelines for meeting decorum and public participation, which was listed on the comment card you completed. I would like to call Ms. Stacy Bonner Lewis.
Good evening to all who sit on the desks and everyone in attendance. My name is Stacy Bonner Lewis. I am a taxpayer and a parent of a student in the district. Right now, the United States of America is a mess. Guess what? People voted for this new administration. The Department of Education is on the brink of being dismantled. Guess what? The people voted for this new administration. Funds are being taken away from HBCUs. Guess what? People voted for this new administration. Madam Chair Sandra and Vice Chair Janie, I'm constantly hearing people voted for House Bill 581. Just because some were in favor of this bill doesn't mean that it's right. This might be good for some counties and cities because they have other means to obtain funding. But for school districts, House Bill 581 is not a good idea. This is why countless school districts are opting out. I hear some Rockdale School Board members want to be unique. Let's be unique. We might be the only county, city, and school district to stay in House Bill 581. Unique. That's what we are aiming for. Cutting funds from public schools during these uncertain times is not what we should be doing. The district CFO showed us how much funds would be lost if we stay in. You might want to debate on how much is being lost. However, I have yet to see any school board members forecast. Less money will negatively equate to a decrease of personnel and services for our students. John Lewis stated, "Ours is not the struggle of one day, one week, or one year. Ours is not the struggle of one judicial appointment or presidential term. Ours is the struggle of a lifetime, or maybe even many lifetimes. And each one of us in every generation must do our part." I implore you, don't let our students down. Please opt out of 581. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Next, we'll have Mr. Stephanie Henry.
Stephen Henry.
Stephen Henry, I'm sorry.
I just, superintendent, board, staff, and taxpayers and guests. Anyway, I don't understand why it's made, it's an adversarial relationship between students and taxpayers. Students don't own homes, not that I know of. It's a different experience. Okay? Students are transitory. They'll transition through the school district. A homeowner, in my case, wants to stay in their home. I've been here for seventeen years. Been in Georgia for about eighteen. It's not transitory from here, for me. I'm not here today, gone tomorrow. It's not a flash-in-the-pan type of thing. But you keep hearing about there's no options. We don't know what the future looks like. When your taxes go up ninety percent in four years, what's my option? What's other people's option who are in similar situations? We have to pivot. We have to get creative. We have to trim the fat. We have to work around these different situations. And I want to just float this notion that it's not infinite resources. You don't have infinite resources. So if you don't scale back to spending, if you don't keep it in step with inflation, and you keep increasing things, in our case, our school, our tax bill went up thirty-six percent in twenty-three, another twenty-five percent, back-to-back in twenty-four. That's a lot. Over the last five years, it's cumulatively been about eighty-nine percent compounded. You don't have infinite resources. It's just like expecting me to go to the side of my house and connect a hose and try to fill Lake Lanier or something. It ain't gonna happen. You don't have enough. You have to scale back and make it proportional so that everybody can have the American dream. Because these students don't understand. When they get to the age and they have to pay bills, and they realize because of these high taxes and because of the mortgages, I mean, the prices of homes have gone through the roof, then they'll understand then what it's meant, what it means to have your course and people be fiscally responsible and consider the shoulders of the people that they're standing on. They're standing on seniors' shoulders. They're standing on their parents' shoulders. And their parents and their seniors are feeling it. That's all I have to say. You need to give a balanced perspective to everybody here about what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Henry. We'll now hear from Ms. Sandra Skibek.
Good evening, and thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you. I had a speech prepared, but I'm gonna cut it short and just say, I want y'all to stay in HB 581. I recognize you've got a tough job in providing stellar education to the youth of Rockdale County. But you've got to do it without bankrupting the citizens of Rockdale County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skibek. Now we have Ms. Sandra Bruce. No, Sandra Bruce. Next, we'll have Mr. John Bowers.
Thank you, Chairwoman, Vice Chair Jones, other members of the board, Acting Superintendent Chesser. I've been up here before. Y'all know why I'm up here. I'm opposed to opting out of 581. Taxpayer sent three kids, successful kids, through the school system back when it was a good school system, which wasn't too, wasn't too long ago. But we got here because of this board. And this board's not alone. It's across the state, other, pretty much probably one-hundred-and-fifty-nine BOEs and pretty much most of the BOCs. Over these past few years, real estate prices have gone up for the students that don't own a house. When you own a house and real estate appraisals and the market's doing better, your house goes up in value. And then the government and unscrupulous, disingenuous politicians will sit there and tell you, well, we're not gonna raise the millage rate because your house value went up thirty percent. We're just gonna take that from you. And this went on and on. And we talked to the BOC. People came up, talked to the BOE. And you proceeded to financially rape us anyway. The only other recourse we had, you weren't listening to taxpayers that go to the General Assembly. The General Assembly gave us this option. And gave all the counties a test, too. You neither opt in or opt out. And for those that do opt out, I don't, I fear what's coming. I'm not one for reciprocity politics like that. But unfortunately, that's where we are these days. That's what you get when you confine yourself to two parties. So, and I'm sick and tired of paying for a failing school system. The state statistics stay at all. I'm not gonna sit up here because it's all open public record. Anybody can go look it up. But when you look at these benchmark tests, third grade, fifth grade, high school students, not a single one of those classes, a majority, can read at grade level. They can't read at grade level. But then you should ask yourself, they're graduating eighty-eight percent. Not even the majority of high school students can read at grade level. They're pushing them out the door. These students are not prepared. This school system's not doing it. And what this board has proven to us over and over again is throw more and more money at it, and it ain't improving. Stop throwing money at it. I can't afford it. Most of the people in this county cannot afford it. We're sick and tired of it. If there's some people that are happy to pay fifty dollars more a month, then take those folks up on it. Take the enrollment, the student enrollment, multiply it times fifty and apply it to those people's bill. They can foot the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Now we have Mr. Micah Browning.
Good evening. Today, we find ourselves at a crucial moment urging our leaders to support us as students rather than bringing us as obstacles. Our voices and presence are significant, and we hope to be heard. We want to know that our Board of Education listens and cares for our futures just as much as we do. However, many individuals have made claims that as we speak in advocacy, we do not know details of the matters we're discussing, nor that we know how to conduct proper research. On the contrary, we stand before you as honor students with exemplary academic records who know what we are talking about and can communicate respectfully and eloquently. Georgia House Bill, House Bill 581 is a complex matter. Your devotion to the school system should not be. Rockdale County Tax Commissioner Tisha Smart-Washington appeared Monday on the Wake Up with D Talk Show broadcast on thirteen eighty WAOK. Preparing her remarks, the commissioner acknowledged that Rockdale County Public Schools currently has a waiver allowing it to exceed the twenty-mill rate cap to secure funding to fund the school district. However, there are developments aimed at removing the ability to exceed the twenty-mill cap, thus reducing the waiver to the twenty-mill, which happens to be the current millage rate set by the school district. In summary, if Rockdale County Public Schools opt in on House Bill 581, which caps home values at the rate of inflation while limiting millage rate to twenty-mills, Commissioner Washington said that the school system will not be able to function. We will not be able to educate our kids, and we will not be able to take care of our families. Furthermore, the proposed solution of raising the millage rate to combat spending losses by opting into House Bill 581, suggested by board members and even community citizens, will ultimately be ineffective. Among current inconsistencies and uncertainties surrounding legislation HB 581, coupled with the state of our nation where there are discussions of dissolving the Department of Education, which will directly affect funding for educational institutions and students, what will happen to the students, Commissioner Washington stated, echoed by host Dr. Dee Dawkins-Taylor. In conclusion, people, please, Board of Education, do what is right in keeping students, teachers, and staff of Rockdale County Public Schools in your mind as we ask you to opt out of House Bill 581. Investing in our schools is investing in our future. And we cannot allow short-term benefits to come at the expense of our students, teachers, and staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Browning. Now we have Mr. George Kellecheck.
Good evening. Acting Superintendent, Board members, citizens, students. Never seen a student pay a tax bill. Again, I'll show you. This is long-term. A hundred and twelve million dollars between the county and the school system will provide relief to nineteen thousand one hundred and seven homesteaders, the pillars of our community. I will say again, this has nothing to do with non-homestead residential homeowners and/or businesses, which will continue to see their taxes increase year after year. 581 was developed to provide citizens of the state of Georgia with tax relief. A hundred and twelve million dollars over a six- A hundred and twelve million dollars over a six-year period for us. Six years, if you live in the city, the county, and the school system, your taxes have gone up one-hundred-and-eighty-seven percent. Senior citizens on Social Security, twenty-three percent. No wonder we had twenty-one foreclosures last month at that courthouse steps. I still haven't gotten information. I believe that this school system has seen a ninety-five percent increase in administrative folks versus teachers, people that teach. But the previous superintendent wanted to charge me five-hundred-and-thirteen dollars to get this information? Ludicrous. Please give us the information. Let's see how we're doing versus Rockdale County. By opting in, it will provide every homeowner that comes into this county that wants to invest in this county, a predictable tax system. If you opt out, it is unpredictable. Who knows where inflation may go in the coming years? Your cost per student has gone up four thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars in the last five years, but we've decreased our student count by one thousand one hundred and ten. I just showed you, we've spent three-point-three million dollars in curriculum in twenty-two and twenty-three, and now it sits on the shelf. We've got to get rid of this calcified thinking and this calcified processes and move this school system forward. So, I have many pieces of data here. Hopefully, you've all have taken it under consideration. Opt in to 581. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellecheck. I would now like to hand it over to Ms. Chesser for cabinet updates and her personal update.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Vice Chair Ms. Janie Jones, and to our other board members and certainly to our public. We'll begin the superintendent's cabinet updates with an overview from our CFO, Ms. Jocelyn Smith.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, and Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, board members, Acting Superintendent Chesser, and guests. Tonight, I'll be talking about our final financial report for the month of January. Revenues for the month of January were thirteen-point-three million dollars. Year-to-date, we were at one-hundred-and-sixty-four-point-three million, representing seventy-five-point-three percent of our budget. Revenues this time last year were eleven-point-eight million, one-hundred-and-forty-seven-point-five year-to-date, representing seventy-three-point-seven percent of the budget. Expenditures for the month of January were eighteen-point-six. Year-to-date, we're at one-hundred-and-twenty-six-point-three, representing fifty-six-point-nine percent of our budget. Last year was nineteen million for the month and one-hundred-and-twenty-two-point-six year-to-date, representing fifty-nine-point-eight percent of our budget. Our encumbrances are one million, six-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. Our current fund balance is sixty-six million, five-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, three-hundred-and-one dollars. The fund balance last year this time was sixty-one million, two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. Our assets are sixty-six million, five-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, three-hundred-and-one dollars. We've cleared our liabilities and our fund balance again is sixty-six million, five-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and five-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, three-hundred-and-one dollars. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And board, I'll share a few remarks with a few minutes of the time. And I'd like to begin by thanking our Board of Education and to our stakeholders for engaging in not only today's budget meeting, but in these three House Bill 581 hearings. Your perspective has been invaluable to helping to shape our budget process and our FY26 budget. I do want to assure our community that we are examining the development of our budget very closely. And here are some things that have taken place thus far. We began last fall where all of our departments initiated a zero-based budgeting process to ensure that all of our expenses are necessary and are aligned to our organizational goals. We also are completing an exhaustive review of all of our central office positions. Currently, we have identified several central office positions where we can reassign this personnel and eliminate some of our central office positions. By doing so, we anticipate to save over two-point-two million dollars in personnel cost. Leaders are meeting with the affected individuals and we are discussing those reassignments with those individuals. We are completing a similar process at each school with an understanding that we are doing so to minimally impact our classroom and our classroom sizes and with our teachers. We believe that these measures will allow us to improve our financial discipline, and we definitely hear the need for our better financial discipline, to enhance our organizational efficiency and to also allow us to achieve our strategic goals. So, thank you again for your input. I do also want to talk briefly about our safety because I know our public has been made aware of social media threats, and we had a student that just referenced that a few minutes ago. And so, this week, well, it actually began last week, we received some social media threats at Heritage High School, beginning last Thursday and continuing on to the beginning of this week. We want you to know that we take that safety and security of our students, staff, and community very, very seriously, and we acted swiftly to address this matter. Through the diligent efforts of our local law enforcement and our school administrators, we found the children who were alleged to have been responsible for these threats, and they were identified earlier this week. These students were charged and now face legal and school disciplinary consequences. We understand that such incidents can cause significant concern and anxiety within our community. Please be assured that safety and security are our highest priorities. We will continue to work closely with law enforcement and take all necessary precautions to maintain a safe learning environment. And I'd like to take just a brief moment to thank some individuals who worked tirelessly this week to address those threats here at our schools. I'll begin first with Sheriff Levitt and members of the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office. I'd also like to acknowledge our Safety Director, Mr. Darren Green, and you see him over on the side. He and his team have also worked very tirelessly as well. We have several other cabinet members. We have our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Kim Hunter, who has been working feverishly with Mr. Green and with the Sheriff's Office. We have Ms. Cindy Ball, our Communications Officer, Mr. Budensee. I can tell you, we've had a lot of long days and a lot of long nights to battle those threats, but I can tell you, they worked very, very hard to make sure that our students and our staff members were safe in schools. But I also want to acknowledge the Heritage High School team and say that Dr. Pittman, his administrative team, and his staff really buckled down to make sure that we had our safety measures in place and that our children returned to school on Tuesday in a very safe and welcoming environment. So, I do appreciate their efforts as well. Lastly, Derek, if you'll pull up that slide, I'll conclude my remarks today by saying that yesterday I had the opportunity to visit all four of our high schools, or our three traditional high schools, and the Magnet School when they announced their valedictorians and salutatorians for two thousand twenty-five. And so, up on the screen, we'll begin first with our Heritage High School, Val and Salz, and these are the individuals who were identified as having the highest and second-highest weighted grade point average at each of the schools. So, for Heritage High School, the valedictorian is Christian Bridges, and the salutatorian is Miguel Penmantel. And you can see those young men there on the screen. At Rockdale County High School, valedictorian, Shoray Edward, and the salutatorian is David Hill Jr. For Rockdale County High School, for Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology, the valedictorian is Delano Page, and the salutatorian is Prakash Gupta. And lastly, at Salem High School, the valedictorian, Mahek Patel, and the salutatorian is Jade Coleman. So, congratulations to those outstanding scholars. Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks for today.
Thank you, Ms. Chesser. Would the board like to take a five-minute recess? Good. Okay, we'll go take a five-minute recess. Derek, can you put five minutes on the countdown, please? Thank you.
[inaudible]
Our five-minute recess is over. If everyone can please take their seats. It's Janette. If everyone can please take their seat, please. Hey, sweetie. The board has reviewed the minutes for all board meetings held in January. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for all board meetings held in January?
So moved.
Is there a second? There has been a first and second to approve the minutes for January. All in favor? Six oh? Thank you. Last week, the board voted to place numerous action items on consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda?
Yes, I move that we approve all action items from the consent agenda from last week.
Is there a second?
I second that.
A motion to approve the action item under consent agenda has been made by Ms. Akita Palmer and seconded by Mr. Larry Cox. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Seven oh. Do I hear a motion to approve a resolution to opt out of HB 581, the statewide adjusted base-year abhorrent homestead exemption?
So moved.
A motion has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and seconded by Ms. Pam Brown. Is there any discussion? And please, when you vote, raise your hand high and let them stay up until we count. All in favor? So, let's do this again. A motion has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and seconded by Mr. Larry Cox. No, that was not Pam Brown. To approve a resolution to opt out of House Bill 581, the statewide adjusted base-year abhorrent homestead exemption. Any discussion?
Okay, so I want to make it very clear about this, this bill. It is permanent. Once, if we do not opt out, it's permanent. If we do opt out, there are other options for us to lower taxes, several other options for us to do that. Also, too, with House Bill 581, within one to five years, five years, we will lose the school district, sixty-one-point-seven million dollars in our school district. And so, we need to understand what that means. So, hopefully, with that information, we can move forward and try to make a decision from there. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would like to say something. So, I am an educator and I will be voting to opt in to House Bill 581. I want to say this. Many of our children, they're raised by their grandparents and they're raised by single families. As educators, we know, we do not educate children in a vacuum, right? Their success deeply depends on the stability, the support, and care that they receive, not only at school, but in the safety of their shelter that they call home. How can we? We cannot just, we have to be concerned about How can we? We cannot just, we have to be concerned about all of our students. You all were just clapping a few weeks ago when we were approved for a hundred percent free lunch. So that tells us that a majority of our families receives some sort of governmental assistance. Children who are homeless. Children who are homeless face many barriers and as an educator, I've seen those children. Number one, they face absentees. Number two, they face mental challenges. Number three, they face lack of concentration. They don't care about learning. If you want, if you want to ensure that we put all of our children on a path of student achievement, or that's what we want to focus on, guess what we need to do? We need to ensure that they have the stability of a safe living environment. And that House Bill 581 gives us an option to do that. That's all I want to say, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Anyone else? So we're gonna take the vote?
Hold on. I know this is a tough one. It is. We are all, I think what I'm hearing is everyone in here in some capacity have a problem as far as taxes. I'm a homeowner. I pay taxes. However, I have to remember the oath that I took is to ensure that we have finances to make sure that our students can receive an education. And coming out of the budget here and today, I have concerns. Knowing that this bill is going to be a permanent bill that we are opting into and we have no other leverage to make any other money is a concern for me. My job is to make sure that those kids, all the ones that's here and the ones that are listening and the ones that are not listening, have that opportunity to receive an education. I get it, when a child is homeless and don't have food and all of that. But we have, right now, our public schools are being beaten up by the local level, by the state level, and now at the federal level, that money is going to be taken away from us. And that concerns me. Where are we going to get that money? Everyone is saying, okay, we have House Bill 581 and it's going to give us a relief. But where are we going to make up those dollars for our students? If we are at twenty mil now and legislation caps us at twenty mil, we have no option to make any other revenue. Where is this money going to come from? And, and, and I, I get it. I, I, it's not an easy choice for me when I hear my seniors say that I'm at capacity, but I think we're fighting at the wrong level. We have other options. We have the state. We have, we have the federal. And for me, I will be opting out because I cannot vote on an uncertainty of where money is going to come from to educate our students. A student, a county that educates its students is a thrivable county. When we take that away, our students don't have that money to make them able to thrive. My daughter is twenty four now. She don't even know if she's going to be able to buy a house because of all of the things that's going on right now. And I get it, but right now, my job as a Board of Education member is to make sure that we have the dollars to educate all of our students in Rockdale County, not just the one percent. I'm sorry, I would be opting out for sure.
Anyone else? Mr. Kenny?
I want to thank everybody who came out to speak tonight either for or against opting out of 581. Students, I want you to know that you're heard. I want you to know that I have, when I make my decision, I've taken into account your worries, your arguments. They were articulate. They were well researched. However, there's a huge, huge problem in Rockdale County right now where homeowners are being taxed to absolute oblivion. And if we continue to operate in this manner and not give some relief to our homeowners, there is a very real threat that they lose their homes. It creates a domino effect. When we, if homes start foreclosing, it reduces the home values. That has an impact on our ability to raise revenue. But we keep talking about uncertainties and those that are talking about opting out because we don't know the certainty of the revenues that we're going to be able to realize. Well, you're also making assumptions that housing values are going to continue to increase at the rate that they have in the last few years. There's no guarantee of that. Harken back to 2008 when housing values, the housing bubble burst and housing values dropped. But if we continue in the same trajectory of, you know, fifteen to twenty percent increases in housing values and we don't adjust that millage rate, we run the very real risk that those that are dependent on social security, those that are on fixed incomes are not going to be able to afford the continued, you know, twenty, thirty percent tax increases that they're, that they're suffering. We have to realize that we as a Board of Education are not the only taxing entity in Rockdale County. All of us have at least one other taxing entity. Many of us have three. And so we keep the millage rate the same. The other entities keep the millage rate the same and you're seeing this, you know, hundred percent increase in taxes over the course of a couple of years. This is not sustainable. There was reference to, if we wanted to reduce taxes, that we can reduce the millage rate. There is nothing in remaining in 581 that says we can't continue to do that. And speaking of assumptions, the assumption is if we lose sixty one million dollars, one, housing values continue to increase at the same percentage as I said before, but it also assumes that we keep the millage rate and never adopt the rollback rate. So there are a lot of assumptions that are built in and to the scare tactic of saying that we are going to lose sixty one million dollars. Ladies and gentlemen, we have about a two hundred and thirty million dollar budget right now. You're going to have a two hundred and thirty million dollar budget next year and you'll have a two hundred and thirty million dollar budget the year after that, adjusted for inflation. So I, I don't want you to be scared in thinking that we did not take what it is that you had to say into consideration. But we have to ensure that the other seventeen hours a day that our students are at home, that they have food on the table, that they have a roof over their head, that their families can afford the insurance to, if the house burns down, that they have insurance to build it back up. We have to ensure that they have that stable home so that they can come to school with, that, come to school with a proper mental state so that they can actually actively participate in their education. So for those reasons, I will get off my diatribe now, but for those reasons, I will be voting to remain in HB 581.
Mr. Cox?
Madam Chair, Board Members, everyone in the audience. I too am going to be voting to stay in 581. I thought about this long and hard. I've been tracking this legislation actually for a couple of years. Earlier today, someone said that, a board member had said that by opting in the Rockdale County Board of Education, the Board of Commission and the city would be unique. I am the board member who said that we would be unique. I stand behind that statement and I'm proud to make that statement and I'll explain why. If 581 is the law of the land in Rockdale County, we will be able to promote Rockdale County as the metro county that you can come to if you're a young homeowner and buy a home and plan for the future. Plan your budget. Know what you're going to be paying year after year. We want those kind of individuals to move to Rockdale County. We want young homeowners who will bring children to Rockdale County so that we can grow our population in the school system, so that we can increase our funding that way. Young people, I was glad to see you come and speak and I'll tell you why. When dinosaurs roamed the earth, back when I was in school, I would have been one of you coming here and speaking also, because you do have a voice, you do have a say and I encourage you to keep coming to these meetings and letting us hear your voice. Because it is very important that you contend, that continue that through your life. Because you will one day be the leaders of this county, state and nation. You will sit in the chairs that we are now. You will be the leaders in the legislature who pass legislation like 581. So keep it up. Keep doing it. I just want to let you all know that no one here, whether we vote for or against it, we've all thought long and hard and we have our reasons and we're doing it for the right reasons. It's just sometimes we all don't agree, but at the end of the day, we will come together, we will govern through this because that's what you have elected us to do. Thank you very much.
Ms. Duncan, anything? All right, well, we're ready for the vote. Do I need to repeat it?
Yes.
There has been a motion to approve a resolution to opt out of HB 581, the statewide adjusted base year at Valorm Homestead exemption. A motion was made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Ms. Pam Brown. All in favor of opting out, please raise your hand. Any opposed? So we'll be opting in with a four, three, four vote. So vote for the, ah, eh. Do, do I hear a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters and student matters?
So moved, Justin.
A motion to go into executive session has been made by Mr. Justin Kenney and second by Ms. Janine Jones. All in favor? Larry, you voted? Seven oh. Then we will go into executive session. Justin, Kenny? Justin, Kenny.
Do I hear motion to approve the active superintendent recommendation recommendation to reassign Dr. Nadine Given, currently assistant superintendent for elementary school, to chief of leadership and learning effective February 28, 2025?
So moved.
Second. Second. A motion has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Ms. Janie Jones. Any discussion? All in favor?
I have something I want to say.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Okay.
I do have that right to do that, right? I just want to say that um, uh, I am in favor of that. Thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? That's a seven oh vote. Do I hear motion to approve the active superintendent recommendation to reassign Dr. Zelphine Smith Dixon, currently chief student support services officer, to assistant superintendent for learning support services effective July 1, 2025?
Second.
A motion has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Ms. Heather Duncan.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? All in favor? The motion is approved, seven zero. Do I hear motion to approve the active superintendent recommendation to reassign Shawna Miller, currently director of early learning, to assistant superintendent for academic programs effective February 28, 2025? A motion has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Ms. Heather Duncan. All in favor? Any oppose? Seven oh, approved. Do I hear motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to reassign Dr. Denise Richardson, currently director curriculum and instruction, to assistant superintendent for teaching and learning effective February 28, 2025?
So moved Heather.
A motion has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Ms. Janie Jones. All in favor? The motion is approved, a seven zero vote. With no further business to discuss, do I hear motion to conclude the meeting?
So moved Janie Jones.
Again Heather.
A motion to conclude the meeting has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Ms. Heather Duncan. The meeting is concluded at eight forty-eight. All in favor? Seven oh, let's go.